Good morning and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Immigration. If you wish to submit testimony, you may at testimony@council.nyc.gov. Once again, that's testimony@council.nyc.gov. If you need any translation services, you may ask one of the sergeants in the room. Hay servicios de traducción disponibles en español. Si necesita servicios de traducción, hable con uno de nosotros en uniforme. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. At no point during this hearing may anyone approach the dais. Chair Hanif, we are ready to begin.
Good morning and welcome to this morning's Immigration Committee Oversight Hearing regarding legal services for asylum seekers in New York City. I'm Councilmember Shaana Hanif, Chair of the Committee on Immigration. I want to thank everyone joining us today, including my council colleagues. I know Councilmember Moya is on the Zoom, representatives from the administration, and the public who are here in person and those participating remotely. The importance of today's topic cannot be overstated. More than 100,000 asylum seekers have come to New York City over the last year. These people have traveled thousands of miles to our city because they want to work here to support themselves and their families. However, the various barriers to entering the workforce have left many unstable to support themselves financially and depend on the shelter system for housing. The pathway out of the challenging situation our city is facing is an effective legal services operation that helps new arrivals quickly and successfully obtain asylum status, temporary protected status, and work permits. For many years, the city has facilitated access to important legal services, including Action NYC, which provides free and safe legal help through an incredible network of community-based organizations. Since asylum seekers began arriving in large numbers last summer, I've been calling for the city to dramatically scale up our immigrant legal service infrastructure. For about a year, this plea had gone largely unanswered with no new city funding dedicated to this issue in FY '23 and FY '24, and little operational support put in place. The consequences to this lack of prioritization has been immense, with the many of the earliest arrivals missing their one-year asylum application filing deadlines, which could relegate them to undocumented status. I've been encouraged that in recent months, the tides have started to turn. In July, the city launched the Asylum Application Help Center, which has staffing from immigration legal service providers, private law firms, students, and volunteers. More recently, the city received significant funding for immigrant legal services from the state. Today, we look forward to learning more about the services provided by the city and how they have been able to support the immigrants who need legal help. We also look forward to hearing from the immigration legal service providers, advocates, and nonprofit partners who have been guiding immigrant New Yorkers through challenging legal processes and often providing other support, including translation, physical space to conduct work, and mental health resources. We look forward to hearing from the administration, advocates, providers, and asylum seekers to understand the challenges, resources available, areas of improvement, and how to better collaborate to ensure that immigrants that come to New York City are not forced to face the complex immigration legal process on their own. We hope this hearing aids in focusing efforts to ensure that the legal services we establish and enhance in response to the recent migrant influx can be made available long-term, including to address the need for legal representation in immigration court. We do not need cruel and counterintuitive policies like caps on shelter stays in order to get through this challenging moment. We can build a legal services infrastructure that gets new arrivals to work out of the shelter system and allows them to support their families and our local economy. I want to thank all the committee staff for their work on this issue, including Nicole Cada, Legislative Council Rebecca Barilla, Policy Analyst, and Florentine Caboree, Unit Head in the Finance Division, my staff Alex Liao, Legislative and Budget Director, Michael Whitesides, Communication Director, and Nora Brickner, Chief of Staff. And lastly, everyone working in the background to make this hearing run smoothly, including the interpreters and the sergeants-at-arms. I also want to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Aung on Zoom. Now I will turn to Committee Counsel to administer the oath.
Thank you, Chair. We will now hear testimony from the administration. We'll hear from Manuel Castro, Commissioner of the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs, Tom Tortoriucci, Executive Director for Legal and Support Initiatives at Moya, and Masha Gindler, Executive Director for the Asylum Application Help Center. Before we begin, I will administer the affirmation. Panelists, please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions?
I do.
Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Good afternoon, Chair Hanif and members of the Immigration Committee. Thank you for holding this hearing. As I have in the last year, I wanted to start by thanking the many thousands of city employees, contractors, nonprofit organizations, and of course, my team at the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs for all their work in the last year responding to this humanitarian crisis. Little did we know that about a year ago, when we started to welcome asylum seekers to our city, we would still continue to welcome so many people to our city in the face of this crisis. They are truly making miracles happen, and so I want to really thank them for all the work that they do. They have truly met the moment. They are working 24/7 to make sure that people have a dignified welcome to our city. And we are very much still at the height of this crisis with the last couple of weeks welcoming records numbers of asylum seekers to our city. And I'm joined here by two of my colleagues who I know have been working 24/7 in making sure that asylum seekers and others arriving to our city have access to legal representation. I am joined by Tom Tortoriucci, Executive Director of Legal and Support Initiatives, and Masha Gindler, Executive Director of the Asylum Application Help Center at the Office of Asylum Seekers Operations. So that we can get into our questions, I've shortened my verbal testimony. I will be submitting my much longer written testimony for the committee to have. But here, I wanted to share a few highlights and summary of what we've done. In response to this humanitarian crisis, New York City continues to lead the nation in its response to this emergency with a coordinated multi-agency effort that humanely meets the immediate needs of newly arrived immigrants. Legal assistance is very much one of the most critical needs facing this community. The day asylum seekers enter the country, the clock starts ticking. Asylum becomes much harder to obtain a year after entry, as the chair mentioned. The federal guarantee of legal representation regardless of ability to pay, that is a right for those facing criminal charges, does not apply for individuals and families facing deportation proceedings. Unfortunately, in the eyes of the federal government, this does not matter if an asylum seeker lacks the legal resources to put claims on paper and present them to an immigration judge or USCIS officer. That's why New York City has invested more than $65 million annually into immigration legal services, recognizing the immense need of our immigrant communities and families, including our newly arrived immigrants. Legal services can help immigrant New Yorkers stabilize their immigration status, access jobs, health insurance, education, ultimately benefiting our city and our country as a whole. And as you know, I have been a long-term advocate for legal services and for these kinds of supports of our community. Because of these strategic investments and the hard work of dedicated practitioners, nonprofit immigration legal service providers, New York City has the most robust immigration legal services in the nation. Even still, the field does not currently have the capacity to fully address the urgent needs of the tens of thousands of asylum seekers who arrived in our city during this crisis. That is why Mayor Adams has left no stone unturned to ensure that these new New Yorkers get the legal support necessary to thrive. From the first bus arrivals last year, for instance, city-funded immigration legal service providers showed thousands of newly arrived asylum seekers how to navigate the system. The federal system process is complex and often confusing, and the federal government was putting the wrong addresses on people's forms and assigning them the wrong courts. The orientation sessions and one-on-one meetings helped people comply with ICE check-in requirements, attend immigration court hearings, change their addresses, and better understand their case and overall process. Due to the influx of newly arrived immigrants and support our community-based partners, we launched the Asylum Application Help Center, which is helping asylum seekers complete and file their applications. This innovative and first-of-its-kind model leverages partnerships with experienced immigration attorneys, lawyers, paralegals, city employees, and most recently, students from academic institutions to assist asylum seekers file their application and put in them one step closer to work authorization. Our efforts with the Help Center have been so successful that the New York State government, seeing the success of our operations, recently announced that they would be allocating additional and significant funds to bolster the city's efforts to provide legal services and expand the application center's model to help Venezuelans and others apply to Temporary Protective Status, or TPS. Additionally, the New York City Department of Social Services and the New York City Health and Hospitals staff recently conducted a comprehensive survey to identify asylum seekers who are eligible for work authorization. Our assessment is ongoing, and we will share an update upon completion in the next few weeks. This work is incredibly important because it will allow us to connect people to the federal government work authorization clinic or work authorization appointments at the Asylum Application Help Center. Due to lack of information shared with humanitarian parolees at the border and barriers to submitting the work permit application, humanitarian parolees in shelter might easily have missed out on the opportunity to immediately apply for work authorization. The city, in partnership with federal and state government and nonprofit providers, scheduled eligible individuals for legal assistance clinics, helping more than 1,700 humanitarian parolees apply for work authorization. The administration also allocated $5 million in new funding for Asylum Seeker Legal Assistance Network, or ASLAN, expanding access to immigration legal information, orientation, individual consultations, brief advice, and application assistance for asylum seekers citywide. Through this initiative, services are provided at community-based legal service allocations citywide and remotely. And the city's immigration legal hotline has expanded to handle higher call volumes and longer call durations, which had been a challenge throughout this humanitarian crisis. Importantly, this effort will help build the city's long-term human capacity to provide immigration legal services, which I know is of special interest to the council and to advocates. Throughout a partnership with CUNY, CUNY Law Student Attorneys, under the supervision of their professors, start their placement this week at trusted community-based organizations called Resource Navigation Centers, and our legal partners are ramping up their operations to conduct application assistance events and supplement the existing service array. Now, I want to speak to the advocacy of our office and the administration on these important manners. As we have said time and time again, New York City cannot do this alone. Asylum seekers are facing bureaucratic and procedural hurdles imposed by the federal government that limits their success and well-being of their families. I have repeatedly joined Mayor Adams and advocates in a national call for our federal government to provide much-needed support and use every tool at their disposal to create safe and orderly and humane pathways to stability, both for those who are already here as well as our newly arrived immigrants. Since the last time I testified before you, the federal government has ceded some of our calls in a few key areas. We sent a letter to the Department of Homeland Security signed by over 30 U.S. mayors in early September, calling for expanded access to TPS protections for immigrants from 11 countries. So far, two of those countries, Venezuela and Cameroon, were designated for TPS in the weeks that followed, and we continue to advocate for the rest of the countries that must and should be included in these protections. On August 31st, I joined Mayor Adams and dozens of asylum seekers, advocates, and elected officials to call on the federal government to expedite the processing of work authorization. Each and every time, as I shared before at these council hearings, when I meet with asylum seekers, the first question asked without fail is, how can I get to work? Asylum seekers repeatedly tell me they do not want anything for free. They do not want to handouts. They want to get to work to be able to provide for themselves, their families, and contribute back to our city. A few weeks ago after this rally, the federal government hosted expedited work authorization clinics, with many walking out the door with clear information of when they could expect a work permit in hand. As far as I know, this is the first time that the federal government has taken on this role. So we continue to call on the federal government to do their part by surging resources and expanding access to expedited work permits. It's likely none of these developments would have happened without our continued advocacy, not just of Mayor Adams, myself, and our administration, but of all the advocates, some of which will testify today. New York City will continue to lead the way. Cities around the world look to our leadership, this leadership driven by our own values and personal experiences. As I shared a few times before, I myself came to this city as a child migrant and would have wished I had had the support that we are now able to provide newly arrived immigrants when we arrive. And you have my commitment that I will never stop advocating for the well-being of asylum seekers and of all immigrant New Yorkers. So with that, I thank you for listening to my remarks, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember De La Rosa. Thank you, Commissioner Castro and Tom and Masha, for being here, and deeply appreciate your work and the advocacy push for TPS designation, redesignation. And really, the question that we want to dig into is, how can asylum seekers get to work? And that's why we're really excited to dive into the legal services operation, and it's been really great to learn about some of the specifics. But I'd like to just begin by, I don't know if any others are testifying?
No.
Okay, great. I'm going to dive right into just numbers, if you could share some data. With the president's recent expansion of TPS to Venezuelans, there's a clear pathway for many asylum seekers to obtain work permits. The president has taken this first step of hopefully many to help our newest neighbors, and we need to make sure the city follows through on our responsibilities to ensure these folks can get on the path to economic independence. Can you share, I know that you mentioned the assessment will be shared with the council, but is there any preliminary numbers you can share with us about how many TPS applications the city has helped file?
Yes, I'll hand that over to Masha to respond, but beforehand, I do want to again shout out Masha and the rest of the Application Assistant Help Center and the Owasso team for all the incredible work. As I said, people are making miracles happen throughout the city, and especially with this Help Center, I think it's been a success. And thanks to really the efforts of Masha and the team working 24/7 to figure this out. As I said, this is an innovative approach, but something that we had to do in order to ramp up support for our newly arrived immigrant community. So Masha?
Yes, happy to take that question. Thank you. So when TPS Venezuelans was announced on October 3rd, the first day we could file, we immediately got to work to schedule over 600 clients for TPS appointments. As of today, about half of those have been filed. The reason that is, is because there's a lot of paperwork that has to go through with it, so a lot of these clients have returned appointments coming their way that they're going to come back with the requisite paperwork and will be able to file at that time.
And do they all come back to the Help Center? Could you describe the process that folks are expected to undergo?
Yeah, of course. So if they get an appointment at the Application Help Center, we'll work with them to help fill out the application and let them know what paperwork, if any, is still required. Then they'll get a follow-up appointment to come back as soon as we have one available to be able to actually submit with us. And we'll also do work to help them get some of that paperwork because some of it can be tricky for them to even figure out how to receive.
And then, could you share how many people are at the Help Center supporting the 600 TPS potential recipients? And is 600, do you consider that a large number, a small number? Could you share what the timeframe of how many folks you expected or had a goal of and expect to complete?
Yeah, for sure. So when we started, we were doing asylum applications. Those are longer forms. To this date, we did over 5,600, so at a rate of about 75 per day. With TPS, we're learning a little bit as we go about unique challenges that have to go with it. Our goal is to do a lot more than 600, but we're still learning, even though the form is on some levels simpler, how much extra time the paperwork collection takes. In terms of the productivity of the center, we have around 75 application assistants that work directly with clients and helping fill out their forms, and they're managed by a crew of around 20 immigration attorneys that review their work and mail their work.
So 75, you call them assistants?
Application assistants.
Application assistants, and then 20 attorney supervisors?
Exactly.
Okay, great. And then, what's the outreach that the city is doing to ensure those who are eligible are aware and know how to file?
So the assessment that Commissioner Castro talked about will give us a lot of information about who is eligible and who we are able to call back and schedule appointments at the center.
Understood. And there was initial confusion about the administration's estimate on how many Venezuelan New Yorkers are eligible. Could you provide an updated estimate?
Our number hasn't changed about there being 15,000 eligible Venezuelans. I think where there was confusion was about how many total Venezuelans were in our care. At the moment, we're still estimating 15,000, but we do want to reserve the right to have the assessment complete and then get back to you with a final number.
And so going back to the 600 scheduled for appointments, is that number like a targeted goal that you all had, or could you describe how you're assessing reaching the 15,000 who are eligible?
Yeah, so I think that we had been booked throughout all of October when TPS was announced, and so we could not have additional clients come in because we fully book our appointments as much as possible. So the first week where we can kind of increase the amount of TPS appointments we're doing would be that first full week in November. And at the same time, as I'm sure we'll talk about later in the hearing, we are also looking into opening satellites that can increase the volume of TPS we do. Our goal is to identify, screen, and schedule appointments for all Venezuelans that are eligible in our care by the end of the year.
Okay. And does that mean that you may add, you might add more application assistants?
Correct.
You'll staff up? Are these folks on staff? Like, could you describe the pay structure or like the staffing?
Yeah, so we knew we had to move quickly. We leveraged a legal temp contract that the law department already had, and so we're hiring both the application assistants and the supervising attorneys through that temp contract.
Okay. And then, how many asylum seekers does the administration estimate are eligible for humanitarian parole?
I do not have that number handy, but I can get back to you that number.
And is the city doing any outreach to ensure these folks are aware that they can immediately apply for work authorization?
Yes, so the assessment mentioned, part of that assessment was to identify those individuals. When we had the federal clinic come in and we filed over 1,600 work authorizations with that project, that was through our assessment, through us identifying who is eligible.
Great. And then, going back to the total asylum applications filed, thanks for sharing the 5,600 number, how many have been successful?
So I'm excited to answer this question because it means, it depends what you mean by successful, and I promise I'll answer either way. So they're successful in the sense that did the federal government accept this application? Because applications get rejected for a multitude of reasons, even small procedural reasons, meaning that if your application is rejected, your clock to get work authorization hasn't started. You still have to resubmit. And so on that level of success, I believe we're very successful. We have gotten great feedback from the federal government about the quality of our applications. We have very few rejections. When we do have rejections, we fix them, and often the rejection is actually not the fault of the center, but a misunderstanding from the federal government that we clarify. So on that level, our applications are submitted accurately, and the 56,000 people that have submitted have had their work authorization clock start, and we're going to be able to call them back in 150 days and do their work authorization. Now, the other part of successful that I'm sure you mean is how many of them are going to get asylum. And the truth is, that answer, we won't know for many years because these applications won't be adjudicated for years to come. So we take measures to ensure quality, like making sure every application is reviewed at least three times, at least twice by immigration attorneys. But ultimately, what will happen will depend a lot on things in the years to come, including the political climate. So we'll learn together.
Totally understand that and the tedious nature and the years-long nature of the application process. Are you able to share how many work permits the city has filed?
Yes, so with work permits, at the clinic, we have filed 444 because we were only able to do the humanitarian-based parole of the clients that we already had coming in. And then with the federal push combined, we did an additional 1,700.
And then, how many have been successful?
So we're still waiting on those two, and we really hope the federal government adjudicates those quickly so that we can learn lessons about exactly that.
That's great. And then, are the application assistants the same group of folks who are helping with all kinds of applications?
Yes, our application assistants are trained to do asylum applications, work authorization, TPS, motions to change address, to change venue, and fee waivers.
Great. And then, does the city have a goal set on how many TPS applications, asylum applications, and work authorization applications it aims to file on a monthly basis?
So our goal when we started this operation in the late summer was to get through 600 asylum applications. This is before we knew that TPS was going to happen.
Could you repeat the timeframe again?
Yes, so when we first started this in July, we wanted to get through 6,000. We're on track to exceed that number for asylum applications, and with the advent of TPS, we're kind of going through a recalculation now to understand what is a moonshot goal for us to do for both asylum and TPS because we don't intend on stopping asylum, even though we want to ramp up TPS.
And then, going back to, just to clarify, on the work permit filing, you said that around 400 were done through the clinic, and then the federal support, you completed 1,000?
1,700.
1,700, okay, great. Okay, this was very thorough. I really appreciate these numbers and looking forward to just staying engaged and receiving regular updates about the applications filled. So I want to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Joseph. Moving on to the 30-60-day rule, this council has been clear in a previous hearing with General Welfare that we are strongly opposed to the mayor's cruel and and counterintuitive policies to evict our newest New Yorkers from shelters. The 30-day shelter limit for single adults and 60-day shelter limit for families is causing operational chaos and pushing vulnerable people out onto the streets. It also makes it harder to apply for asylum. TPS and work permits do challenges related to changing addresses and the instability caused by eviction. How is the city providing assistance with change of addresses for the various applications for folks who are within the 30-60-day vacate period?
Well, before, if you don't mind, Chair, I wanted to give the opportunity to, for Tom Turcic to talk about our general work with TPS applicants, especially our Haitian Response Initiative, which we're very proud of. And this is work that's happening in parallel with the Help Center. I think it's critical to say some, a few things about that because I do want to highlight that it, you know, this is, this work has been ongoing, in particular with communities like the Haitian community. And again, we are using this as an opportunity to learn more about how to conduct this work at scale in the case we do, are successful in getting TPS for other communities.
Can you share?
Thank you, Commissioner. Hi, Chair Hanif.
Hi.
Good to see you. So as Commissioner mentioned, the city has really taken an innovative approach in the Application Help Center, filing high numbers of applications, using, not working in the traditional way with immigration legal nonprofits under contract. And so Moya, as always, leads our community-rooted immigration legal services work. And the administration invested $5 million in that with the Asylum Seeker Legal Assistance Network. And so the TPS asylum application filing continues to happen under that program, as well as information and education around these forms of relief, full screenings and referrals to the appropriate legal service provider. And so the Haitian Response Initiative as well has been working hard to file TPS applications for Haitians under the new redesignation. And so that work continues. And as Commissioner Castro mentioned, the balance of continuing to invest in community-rooted immigration legal services with our nonprofit partners, together with the high-volume, high-quality operation established on the Application Help Center, I think really does, does show that the administration is taking innovative approaches to addressing this issue while also investing in the longer term.
That's helpful to know. And now keeping that in mind, how does that, how does that pair with the 30-60-day rule? How are the legal services impacted by these directives?
Yes, I'll let both Tom and Masha speak to that because we, I think both the Help Center and our Aslan partners do a lot of great work with respect to address changes and supporting these populations. I also want to add that we'd also have to consult with our H&amp;H partners. My understanding is that a lot of this work is also happening at the Arrival Center in, elsewhere in the system. So both, both of the work that is happening with our, you know, with, with Aslan and the Help Center is complemented or in addition to what's going on with H&amp;HH, but I have to consult with my colleagues there. Tom, do you want to just, or Masha, do you want to start?
Yeah, so for, just to answer your specific question about whether we do change of address, change of venue forms, we absolutely do. So anyone that filed with us that has changed address can come and we will file a change of address form for them. We also, when we check out a client at the end of their mailing period, counsel them on the importance of them also knowing to proactively ask to have their address changed because that's a piece of education that sometimes is important. They can be forgiven for not knowing, that's a key step for them to take. And we provide them with the form and concrete instructions about how to do that in the event that they, you know, move out of the city or out of the state because some of these folks are moving out and we want to make sure they still have the advantage of the application we did for them. So we definitely do that counseling. I also want to take this moment to say that if it was possible for us to file these online where people can receive their notices through email, the way most of us tend to communicate these days, a lot of these problems would go away. And I think all of us can speak to receiving mail via email more likely than via physical addresses.
And, and before I hand it over to Tom, this is, thank you for the question because this is, has been a special concern of ours since the beginning. As you know, people were arriving to New York City who, who had other intended destinations and they were arriving here. And so the first work that we began doing with asylum seekers is changing of addresses. But now we're seeing asylum seekers come from other parts of the country. Seems like there's, there's a network of support or even other, other cities and localities putting people on planes or, you know, on their way here. And so that creates more of an issue. And so this is one of, one of our pieces of advocacy with the federal government to improve, improve how we, you know, go about this.
So just to build on Masha, your response, is there separate data that is cognizant of folks who are reaching their 30-day cap or the 60-day cap? Are they being prioritized for these appointments? How are you making, how are you distinguishing these clients?
So individuals that have been given a 30 or 60-day notice are offered an appointment at our clinic to come in and do either, you know, now TPS or asylum.
And then what address are they putting on their application?
Anecdotally, a lot of them have an idea about where they're going to be. And so we put that address about where they're moving to. In some instances, we continue with the shelter they're at, knowing that their mail will be held for 30 days at that emergency site. And we're looking into options about how we can be sure to connect individuals with federal mail in a legal way.
So right now, that, that part doesn't exist? That connecting to the more substantive address, more reliable address?
Right, because there's some laws that determine us not being able to move mail once it's arrived at the location it's supposed to arrive. I believe there's consents we're looking into to be able to have clients consent to us moving their mail from the shelter to wherever they might be. But at the moment, we're looking into it and exploring that option.
So just to get this clarified, right now, for those who are reaching their 30-day, 60-day cap, they can put the address of the shelter they are about to exit?
Right.
Because they have a 30-day window in being able to use that address? But then what happens after?
So if they, afterwards, they're able to come back, if they were to move to a different location, they're able to come back to us, let us know where they are now receiving mail, and we'll do a change of address form for them.
So are they receiving this instruction in a, on a written notice? Is it verbally communicated with folks? How, how is, I mean, this seems to, this seems, this adds to the reason why I feel that the 30-60-day directives are harmful and creates deeper precarity for asylum seekers. Would love to know the extent to which you all are communicating this so that folks understand just procedurally what to expect.
I'm confident that with the counseling we do at the end of our appointments, folks understand that they need to let the federal government know where they live or else they will miss important mail. I'm confident that all of our clients can come back to us physically and get that service and we'll change their address wherever they now reside. And I think that the next area for us to work through is for mail that is clearly from the federal government that's being held more than 30, you know, that would be there at the 30-day mark at these shelters. And we're very interested in finding legal ways for us to, you know, we'll be able to see who it's addressed to, to connect them to that individual. I think that we will be able to circle back very soon on what that solution would be.
I'm very alarmed by this process, as I'm sure folks in the, in, in the room are too. Do you acknowledge that the policy of evicting people from shelter makes asylum, TPS, work permit filings more difficult?
So I just want to give them an opportunity for, for Tom to-
Could you just answer this question, then? We'd love to hear from Tom.
So again, I think, you know, we're working through the challenges as, as Masha, you know, explained. I think this is why we're setting up an infrastructure to be able to support asylum seekers as much as possible, which is what our role is. And about half of the people who are now returning, you know, will be able to provide their next destination. Those who are going back to our Arrival Center to apply, apply for a new placement will be able to put their new addresses onto those forms.
So at, just to clarify again, nothing that, nothing physical is being distributed to inform applicants of the procedural impacts of precarious address changes?
You're right in answering that point, and I'm happy to now. We do give physical documentation about what the change of address form is, why it's important to fill it out and how to fill it out, along with a copy of the form. So that is part of the package that our clients leave with.
Okay. I'd like to turn it over to my colleagues for questions. Councilmember De La Rosa.
Thank you, Chair Hanif. Hello, Commissioner and team. Thank you for being here today. I have a question about the staffing. And I know that Chair Hanif asked a little bit about the processing of the asylum applications and how much staff is there. Your office, like every other agency in the city, is going to be subject to this 15% peg. Do you foresee an impact in your staffing levels in terms of the staff you need in order to continue to service asylum seekers?
Well, the staffing at the Help Center will not be impacted by the peg as it's, it's not funded through, through the, the funding that will be impacted by the peg. But let me hand it over to Masha to explain that a little further.
Yeah, we're currently funded with a generous grant from the state funds and that is not subject to pegs.
Okay, so all the staff that is now processing asylum applications, TPS applications as well?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, that's great news. And then with the 30 and 60-day rule, one of the questions that I have is, with this change now for 30 days, will you foresee a processing delay? Is the staff that is processing or reprocessing asylum seekers back into the system? So if, if a family is, you know, the 30 days hits and they have to leave the shelter, they have to reprocess back in if they have nowhere to go. Are you foreseeing a delay in processing time, given that the caseload is going to go up because of the reprocessing, I'm imagining?
I would say, so I, I can't speak to the processing time at the Arrival Center run by health and hospitals. I don't foresee that changing our processing time at the Asylum Application Help Center. Our capacities will still stay the same.
Okay. And in terms of the legal services that you're providing, when a person goes through the Roosevelt Hotel, are you kind of screening them for what legal services they need?
We are doing a backwards-looking assessment with all the individuals currently in our care, and we're standing up exactly that, a screening service at the Arrival Center to immediately be able to schedule people for the appropriate appointment.
Great. Can you repeat which agencies are kind of leading that, the work around legal services? So you said H&amp;H?
No, what I was talking about was the Arrival Center, just the Arrival Center itself. Processing families coming in and finding shelter is, is run by health and hospitals.
And what other agencies are involved in, in the legal services piece for asylum seekers?
Well, with respect to the Help Center, you know, that, we had to set up an infrastructure so that it's a dedicated space to provide this pro se model of assistance. And, and like I said before, it was important to set up a structure like this, in large part because then people have a place to come back to, right? For change of addresses and so on. But what I was referring to earlier with, with Tom and the Aslan Network, the Asylum Seeker Legal Assistance Network, I think that, that is also an effort to set up an infrastructure and, and support those organization, community-based legal providers doing really critical work on the ground where asylum seekers can connect to and have an ongoing relationship with a, a community and developing the, the availability of legal providers with our partnership with CUNY. So do you want to talk about it, Tom?
Sure, thanks, Commissioner. I think it's important to note that the city, every year, invests $65 million in immigration legal services citywide. And those nonprofits that have been carrying out that work for years continue to serve both asylum seekers and long-residing New Yorkers. And so individuals that are not served at the Help Center may very well be and are being served by our partners throughout the field. At community-based organizations where folks have the linguistic, cultural competencies to provide effective service in the neighborhood in which folks live, as well as together with citywide immigration legal service providers that work in various community sites and institutions such as hospitals, libraries, and schools.
Okay, I guess I just wanted to, sorry Chair, just to go over, but I just wanted to understand. So I know that there's the Office of Asylum Seeker Operations, there's the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs, there's health and hospitals. Either, are there any other mayoral agencies or, or offices that are involved? And then what's the coordination between all of these entities? That was my question.
That's a great question. So the asylum, the asylum application Help Center is housed under the Office of Asylum Seeker Operations. Masha and her team run that. Moya oversees contracts under Action NYC, the Haitian Response Initiative, the Asylum Seeker Legal Assistance Network. It's approximately 15 million in programming. The largest holder of immigration legal service contracts is HRA, and Immigrant Opportunities Initiative is administered by the Office of Civil Justice within HRA.
And again, you know, this is a mix, we had to figure out a mix of, of approaches here, right? Because of the current crisis. But I continue to emphasize the importance of building up the infrastructure, again, because things continue to change. TPS, we're, we're glad that it, it happened, but it might continue to, things might continue to change if other communities are afforded TPS and we see other policy changes at the federal level.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioner. Always good to see you. At the asylum application Help Center, how many, how many centers do you have altogether? Is it spread out through the city or is it one location?
Right now, we are one location in Midtown and we're looking to open up satellites very quickly to handle the influx of TPS applications we want.
How long does it take for someone to get an appointment?
It depends how they were to get an appointment. Right now, the best way to get an appointment is talk to shelter staff.
And what if you're not in a shelter? How does that work?
Right now, we are only serving individuals that are in shelter.
So how many have you processed so far?
5,600.
And what's the goal? Because I know for TPS, there's about 500,000 eligible Venezuelans for TPS and others.
Right, so when we first started, we were focusing on asylum. Our goal was to do 6,000 asylum applications. We still want to hit that goal. I think we'll surpass it. Now that TPS is on the horizon, we are, our goal is to identify, screen, and make appointments for every eligible Venezuelan in our care by the end of the year.
Are they allowed to walk in for appointments?
Walk-in appointments are only available for people that want to file for asylum that have their one year coming up. We don't currently have walk-in appointments for other resources.
This is just for current TPS holders?
No, this is just if, basically, if you have, if you're coming up on your one year of being in the country, so you're at risk of being ineligible for asylum, we will accept you as a walk-in to walk through your, both asylum and TPS and work authorization options. But that is the only group for whom walk-ins are available right now.
What, what information does individuals have to give when they make an appointment?
So when they make an appointment, we will ask for their name and contact information. We ask for what language they speak so that we can be prepared. And we ask for their address to verify that they are living in shelter. They can also provide their G-number in lieu of that, but we just need some confirmation that they're currently living in shelter.
Are you prioritizing any group over the other?
We started prioritizing families with children. When we first launched, we called all the families with children in our care about three times before we opened it up broader. Now we are also going to prioritize Venezuelans.
And the asylum seekers we have living upstate, do they also qualify for this?
They do. We received a good number of them already that were bused to be able to have these appointments, but I do have to get back to you on the exact number.
And with the 30-60 rule, 60-day rule, how does that impact asylum seekers, TPS recipients? Because you need a physical address to get your mail so they don't-
Right.
How's that working? Let me know how, how you figuring this out while we figure this out as well.
Yes, I mean, I'll take every opportunity to say, if the federal government allows us to do this online via email, then that problem would be solved. In the meantime, all of our clients, if they move, can come back to the center as a walk-in and get a change of address- can come back to the center as a walk-in and get a change of address or change of venue form done for them so that they can receive mail at wherever they reside at that point.
So every 30 days or every 60 days, they must come see you? Well, just make it make sense for me, that's what I'm trying to figure it out here.
I understand the challenge. We're trying, it's important for us that these folks get their mail because what is our work for if they don't? I agree. So the steps that we're taking, we're holding mail at the shelters currently for 30 days after someone leaves. Two, we are doing change of address, change of motion forms. Three, we're giving detailed instructions about how to fill out these forms and examples of these forms to every client that checks out with us because, you know, some folks are success stories that are leaving shelter of their own ability, but they still need to receive their mail. They still didn't know how to do this even before the 30-day, 60-day shelters. And we're continuing to advocate for the ability for us to file online so that individuals can get their notices from the federal government online, like we all get our notices from all the, you know, interactions we have with government.
Chair, can I ask one more question? And what are some of the challenges you're facing at these centers right now?
So, there's a couple of challenges, of course. One is, you know, we, we want to make sure that we're scheduling in such a way that there's not long waiting, wait periods in the waiting room, but that every application assistant is always busy. But these folks are coming from all over the city, and so it's hard to track that perfectly. So we're always thinking about ways to improve that. The second challenge we're having is, this is very hard work, so especially for asylum applications. Our staff are hearing really hard stories day in and day out. The clients are sharing really hard stories day in and day out. We have a mental health clinician on site to deal with emotions that they have.
That was going to be my next question, okay.
Yeah, and I think, and that helps, of course, but what I'm always wondering is, you know, how long can people hear these stories? How long can people stay motivated? We have an incredible staff right now. I don't know how we got so lucky, but their mental health's important, obviously, to us.
How many staffers do you have?
We have around 75 asylum application assistants at any given day and around 20 immigration attorneys at any given day.
And how many clients do you see per day?
We see, we book 150 appointments. Sometimes that represents one client, sometimes it represents a family, so effectively three, four clients. And we, so in terms of them are humans that come through our hallways day in, day out, probably 200.
Thank you.
Masha, can you speak about language access? I know I'm not supposed to be asking the questions, but I'm very proud, I'm proud about this. I think I want to highlight that for the council.
Yes, so an important part of our process is language access and informed consent. People's legal options are going to be affected by what they do with us. They have to understand what they're consenting to. Everyone gets service in their preferred language. We look 10 days ahead to see what appointments are coming, and we schedule in-person interpretation to meet every language need. And we've recently, when we call people back to confirm their appointment, we started double-checking their language because what we found is some folks from West African countries report that they speak French because they believe that that's a more, a language they're more likely to get education for. And so now we've, we've learned that we have to really let them know that they can tell us what language they prefer and we'll find it, yeah.
Correct, correct, correct. So how many languages do you have on site, since you wanted to ask the question? How many questions, how many languages do you have on site?
So, you know, any given day, probably varies, up to 10. We have never had a client whose language you could not accommodate so far.
What's the dominant language you get?
Spanish, Haitian Creole. For the top ones, we had, we had a moment where we had a lot of Hungarians. Wolof is very popular.
That's from Senegal, that's West Africa.
French is popular too, but then there's a lot of dialects from West Africa that we are not accommodating. And Venezuelan sign language was one of the, one of the ones.
Venezuelan sign language.
Sign language, sure, okay, very good.
Specific to Venezuela, right? Yes.
Thank you so much, Chair, thank you. Thank you. So I know during my colleagues' questioning, we learned that folks not in shelters can't get appointments?
Right, so right now, our clients, we're focusing on those that are in our care.
Okay, and so then everyone else still has access to Action NYC?
Correct.
Could you talk a little bit more about renewed outreach and community engagement about the agency's services?
Sure, so the broader field of immigration legal service providers are serving newly arrived asylum seekers, both in shelter and not in shelter. We have invested as part of ASLAN in the Action NYC hotline to expand its ability to receive more, higher call volumes. They've received more than 40% increase in call volume since before the influx of newly arrived asylum seekers and longer call times so they can help people talk through their paperwork and orient them to their case. And so we promote the Action NYC hotline through the shelter system and through our community-based organizations and immigrant rights workshops and, and other presentations, also online and through social media. We also created flyers for the Asylum Seeker Legal Assistance Network listing the various points of entry. What Commissioner Castro and Moya have done really is establish a broad set of points of entry because folks are distributed all around the city, and capacity is a challenge as well among our providers. And so trying to ensure that folks can access not only application assistance, but also self-help information so that they can take control of their own case where legal assistance isn't available.
Thank you, Tom. I'm really grateful, Masha, that you're here. Your presence is greatly appreciated. The, we've been looking forward to having OASO present. And, and so because you're here, I'd like to ask some broader questions because we've been waiting for the last six months to get to know OASO. So could you describe what the work of the office has entailed since its creation in March?
Yeah, so like during many citywide emergencies, an office would sit up to help coordinate efforts across the city to address challenges faced by, you know, the city during this crisis. So OASO just does just that. They coordinate for, across agencies to address housing, schooling, legal service help, help, other types of help assistances to ensure that all the agencies are working together to address the crisis.
And specifically the asylum seeker influx?
Exactly.
Could you describe the staffing structure?
I can talk about my unit because that's the one I'm most familiar with. I know that the broader OASO team is currently hiring, and so it would be best for me to circle back with you with all the positions that they currently have filled and which ones are not yet filled. But as you know, for us, we have our crew of 75 application assistants and 20 immigration attorneys.
And then how many units? Could you give just a skeletal sketch of the?
I can't at this time, but I just don't want to misspeak, but I'll circle back.
And then, just to clarify on the function or the differences between OASO and Moya, could you walk us through that?
Well, as Masha explained, OASO was set up to address a specific crisis with asylum seekers arriving to our city. We work in a very highly collaborative manner. For instance, Moya at the outset had anywhere between 14 and 15 operational staff at the Help Center to help establish it. As OASO grows, they've taken over more of a, of that operational role. And really, that's what Moya is set up to do. You know, we deploy our staff wherever we are needed. And then with instances such as these where the crisis is of a great magnitude, an office is set up to manage these, these ongoing efforts. But like, for instance, with respect to language access, which is a special interest of Moya's, we have oversight over language access citywide. This was something that we wanted to pay special attention to at the Help Center and elsewhere where OASO is doing their, their great work. So we work in a very highly collaborative manner, but the operations part of this crisis is being managed by OASO.
And I'd also just add if I may that there's, you know, the work you guys do is for all the immigrants that are currently in, in our city and that still need resources even before this influx of migration. There's still humans that need work, and you guys do that day in and day out. And we just have a special, special focus on the crisis element of the asylum seeker influx right now.
Thank you, Masha. And you know, this is something we discuss with the, with the committee often. And it's something to keep reminding us of that prior to this wave of asylum seekers, we've had in our city hundreds of thousands of undocumented immigrants, for instance, all of whom need support in advocacy. And so that continues, that work continues, and it's something that I, I pay special care to because I hear from them when I visit their communities. They're often asking as, well, what about us, right? Why just a new arrival? I'm sure you all hear it in your districts. So our, our office is, is working through those, those challenges that we often hear from longer-term migrants. And so we've, we set up ASLAN, and I continue to highlight ASLAN because this work needs to continue to happen, the building out the infrastructure in the field with our nonprofit partners and now with CUNY so that we're also looking at the medium-to-long-term work that we're going to have to do in the coming years.
Thank you. And Masha, I understand from your response that there are several units and, and still in, in progress of this office being built out. How do you see the, how do you see the office's relationship to the council?
Oh, my goodness. I don't know how to answer that. I know I studied hard to be here today, and that is all I can probably say.
That's great, because we're hoping that a commitment could be made for OASO to join our hearings in the Immigration Committee. And we've also been figuring out if this committee has oversight over OASO. We don't want it to be a pseudo-office that exists that isn't coming before the council. And so it is really meaningful to us that you are here. I want to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Krishnan.
I want to turn to some questions about Commissioner Castro, your recent trip to Central South America. On October 3rd, Mayor Adams took a partially taxpayer-funded trip through several countries in Central and South America in an attempt to discourage asylum seekers from coming to New York City. And although fact-finding missions have a time and place, New Yorkers really needed their mayor here helping our city coordinate a response to new arrivals. Commissioner, could you share what the trip accomplished for New Yorkers? Is, will there be a report out or lessons learned? Questions that you've come back with? We'd love to just hear how the trip went.
Yeah, well, I think that the trip was incredibly impactful, I have to say. To be able to retrace really the journey of so many newly arrived immigrants, new New Yorkers, for me was, was important. I know that it really moved the mayor, myself, and everyone that went on this trip. There, there will be more follow-up. The mayor has required, has said that there will be more information coming out from, as a result of this trip. Three things that the mayor has said and, and we've said about the trip, we wanted to speak not just to the, some of the asylum seekers who were on their route here, on their journey here, but specifically to the local press to talk about, you know, some of the misinformation that we were hearing, or rather, some of the exaggerated information that we're hearing or we're seeing spread through social media and elsewhere about what migrants will find upon arriving to New York City or even the United States. Something to, to really know is that smuggler rings or people who have turned this into business ventures are directing people to New York along the journey and they're, they're marketing this journey to people who are led to believe there will be things here that might not be available to them. And so people are going on this incredibly risky journey, especially through the Darien Gap, because of this, these marketing schemes. And so we wanted to communicate some of the realities that people are facing here in New York and in the United States to the local press. We spoke to a lot of local press while we were there. We also, I think most importantly, we wanted to have a, a direct relationship with people also grappling with some of the challenges of welcoming so many newly arrived immigrants along, along the journey. So whether it's Mexico City, Quito, or Bogota, a lot of people are working on this issue in the region, which was, for me, incredibly insightful. We've been saying, this is a national issue. We can't possibly, New York City cannot do this alone. But it really is an international issue. We're in a completely new era of mass migration, which we all have to really acknowledge and say, well, how, what are we, how do we address this at the federal, international, and local levels? And I think there's a role that we all must play. And that, that's sort of part of the fact-finding. I think understanding who are the key players and stakeholders. Sometimes you can only do that in person and having these conversations. And we heard from not just the federal, local governments in these countries, but also civil society. So one of the most moving meetings we had was with a nun who, who runs a nonprofit in Mexico City who was speaking about her shelter having capacity for about 100 people, but right now she had about 1,000 people waiting outside for placement. Because Mexico City, like New York City, is seeing waves and waves of, of migrants, of asylum seekers coming through, through that city, and they just don't have the capacity to serve everyone. And so we kept hearing a lot of the same challenges we're facing here elsewhere. And I think that is going to be really helpful for us in, in seeing how we can work together with these other cities and other localities, but how we understand this issue as not just a local issue that we have to address, but a really international issue.
I agree that our city has a particular and unique responsibility in connecting this issue internationally, and so I'm glad to learn that. However, could you just speak to the, the talking points or the conversations that you all were influencing or having with these organizations? Was it to dissuade people from coming to our city? And, and/or with the press? What, what did you want to demonstrate as happening in New York City to the press there? And again, will there be a report that is released or distributed to New Yorkers to better understand what was accomplished from this trip?
So, you know, I went along the trip with, with the mayor and the International Affairs Team, and it really will be the purview of the International Affairs Office to, to, to issue a follow-up report or, or presentation. But I do have to say that a lot of the emphasis on, on us going there to say, to dissuade people, I think was reported, but it was a surprise to me because it was not, it was not the intended purpose of the trip, you know, and, and I think what I had said and what we had said leading up to the trip is the need to clarify the misinformation that we kept hearing from asylum seekers here that was being shared with them throughout the journey. And so, for instance, many asylum seekers arrived to New York or to the United States thinking that they would be embraced as asylum, you know, asylees. They didn't realize that they would need to apply for asylum, right? And that they would not have work permits available to them from the start, that they would have to figure out how to live in the United States without work authorization for many months or even years. And so a lot of that is, is not communicated to us, to people on their journey here. And so we wanted to make sure that people understood that this is not within our purview, within the city's purview, this is a federal issue. And so when they arrive here, they may not get everything that they were promised along the journey, which often we hear from asylum seekers say, here, we were promised X, Y, C. And so we just wanted to be completely honest. We also did want to say that, you know, because this humanitarian crisis for us was very unexpected, you know, we, we continued to struggle to find placement for people. unexpected, you know, we continue to struggle to find placement for people as they arrive. I mean, we continue to break records, and we wanted to be very honest with asylum seekers that unlike what they've been hearing along their journey, they're not guaranteed a hotel room, right? Part of this, and I've said this in many interviews, is the advent of social media. There are TikTokers who are asylum seekers who are staying within our care in a hotel, then they might communicate to others, hey, this is where I was put up, right? Upon arrival. Well, that's not guaranteed for everyone that's on their journey.
I mean, and you're saying, I mean, what I'm hearing from you as you share this is sounding like, you know, one or two people have had an influence over the mass migration that New York City is witnessing. And it feels really strange to hear that the mayor and several of the offices took a trip to Central South America to lay out information about, actually, we don't have enough placements, or actually, what you're hearing about the benefits or the sanctuary safety operations or resources you will receive is actually untrue. And if I'm hearing that correctly, it feels like a very disingenuous trip to take during this time.
Well, like I said, you know, it's explaining the reality that we're facing in New York because people are making their way here, believing that we can do a lot for them. And again, we're, you know, we have to manage expectations and...
What was the cost of this trip to taxpayers?
Well, I think the mayor's office will have to get back to you on the cost. As was reported, I paid for my own trip to get there, so did the mayor.
Paid as in it wasn't part of the office's budget?
Budget, yes.
It was part of the office's budget to take?
No.
No, it wasn't. So it was everyone who went to this trip, everything was paid from personal expenses?
Yes, I paid my trip and hotel stays there.
Okay. And then, but you're suggesting that we can get information about how much the trip costs in totality?
Yeah, you'll have to follow up with the City Hall about that.
And then, is deteriorating conditions for asylum seekers part of an intentional strategy from the administration to dissuade people from coming to New York City?
No. I mean, again, we're trying to do our best to support the records numbers of people that are arriving. And yes, like I said earlier today, we're, everyone working and involved in this effort is making miracles happen. I mean, we're seeing hundreds of people arrive each day, and we have to figure out placement for all of them. And that is an incredible challenge, and we've been very honest. It's a strain on all of our systems.
Could you share the duration of the contract at the Red Cross Center? How long is the contract?
So the contract to lease the space at the Red Cross Center will last until the end of June 2024.
Turning to Action NYC and IOI, when will the administration reissue the RFPs for Action NYC and IOI?
Tom, you want to take it?
Sure. Thank you. So Action NYC, the next step in the procurement process will be the issuance of a concept paper. That will be in the coming weeks. The public, including nonprofit providers, will be able to submit feedback and questions that will be addressed at a public hearing, as well as in written form, and that'll happen over the coming months. We anticipate that new contracts under this new procurement will begin January 1st, 2025. With respect to IOI, I don't have information about the current status of that RFP, but we can get back to you after talking with OCJ.
Okay, thank you for that. In August, Secretary Mayorkas sent the administration a letter that included a number of recommendations, and I've asked to review those recommendations a number of times, but the administration has not shared them with me or our committee. Could you summarize what was in that letter and commit to sharing it with the committee following this hearing?
Well, I think we've responded to some of the items in that letter. We'll have to follow up with our official response from City Hall.
Are you able to share with the recommendations?
Many of which are not under the purview of Moya, so I really can't speak to them. They're really about information sharing, my understanding.
Who is it under the purview of?
It's a multi-agency, there were recommendations...
Who would we need to get permission from, or who would be tasked with sending it over to us?
City Hall.
Or revealing the recommendations?
City Hall. This is, this was a letter issued to us under the purview of Federal Legislative Affairs Office.
So you can't, right now, share any of the recommendations? You can't commit to sharing the letter with the committee or me?
Well, it wasn't directed to Moya or to any of the items that we have oversight over. My understanding is that many of the recommendations had to do with information sharing, for instance, or items that really would need to be responded to by City Hall.
Okay. The Blitz Clinic, run jointly between USCAS, the city, and the state in partnership with NYIC, IARC, American Immigrant Lawyers Association, Lutheran Immigration and Refugee Service, and the Legal Aid Society, seems to have been a massive success between September 25th and October 6th. It filed over 1,700 applications. What would be needed to establish this model on a permanent basis?
That's a great idea. We are talking with the federal government to see what options exist for the future. Obviously, we would need their cooperation first and foremost.
And is there a timeline that you all are anticipating?
I don't currently have a timeline, but we are in active conversations, and I hope to look back soon.
Those are all the questions I have for you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, and thank you, Chair. We will now turn to public testimony. We will be limiting public testimony today to two minutes each. Please note that if your prepared testimony exceeds two minutes, in addition to testifying before the committee today, you may also submit your full testimony to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. If you are here to testify in person and you have not yet completed a witness slip, please visit the sergeant's table in the back and complete a witness slip now, even if you registered to testify online. For in-person panelists, please come up to the table once your name has been called. For virtual panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant-at-arms will set the timer and give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your With that, we will now hear from Kelly Agnew Barahas, Laura Adams, and Melissa Chua. And whenever you're ready, you may begin. Thank you.
I think we're still in the morning. Good morning, Chair Hanif. I'm Kelly Agnew Barahas. I'm the Director of Refugee Resettlement at Catholic Charities Community Services. Thanks for this opportunity to testify. Catholic Charities has been in the position of serving at this point mostly with both social services at the Navigation Center that we stood up, as well as with multiple satellite sites and subcontractors, and in legal services. About 35% is our estimate of total of the new arrivals, but with, again, both social services and legal services. So we are in a good position to kind of see a lot of different elements of the needs of asylum seekers. We would want to just start by saying this is not a new issue of having asylum seekers come to New York City. For my entire career, we've worked with asylum seekers. It's really the volume that's presenting this new challenge for the city. So it's shedding light on something that we've been dealing with for quite some time. I want to just kind of immediately go to two issues that I feel are most pressing, that my colleagues in immigration legal have shared with me to represent and to flag. One is to specifically work on increasing access to DOJ accreditation. As part of a nationwide initiative to address the shortage of licensed immigration attorneys, many legal service providers and stakeholders are exploring creative initiatives to increase capacity to provide legal services. We think that this is something that needs much more attention and investment, and, you know, there's some momentum to allow representatives to create, to provide services in lieu of fully licensed attorneys, but capacity concerns are very, remain a serious concern. We have to address that by, you know, with additional investment of resources, and we would ask the city to increase discretionary funding to support those initiatives. I also want to implore the use of more multi-year funding for full representation. It's extremely limited to have year contracts that end when you're representing new cases that we know will take years to conclude. The idea of investing in pro se services is key. However, we need to continue ensuring that, you know, it's not just a one-off that we're allowing people pro se without the backup and support. The truth is that these cases are very complex. Cases are much more likely to be successful if they have full representation, or at least, you know, additional support of an attorney. It's, we're really pleased that TPS has been announced for Venezuelans, but this leaves out still more than half of the folks that we've been welcoming here, and we need to continue pushing for more solutions, and multi-year awards would really help that. So I just, two seconds, just to say that social services are as critical as legal services. When people are not stabilized, they are not able to be successful in their legal cases, so we would implore resources of both sides. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Hanif, Councilmembers and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this morning. My name is Melissa Chua. I'm the Associate Director of the Immigrant Protection Unit at NILAG. We are proud to operate in a city that values its immigrant citizens and supports much-needed services to them through their budget. We believe that long-term continued investment in legal services and community-based organizations, including those with deep expertise, is crucial to meeting the current and future needs of new New Yorkers. We cannot treat this issue of legal services and other support for new New Yorkers as a temporary one. Instead, we are urging in the support of investment in expertise, programming, and services to continue to meet the ongoing and ever-changing legal needs of the immigrant community in New York City. As the Commissioner discussed earlier this morning, while application assistance is an extremely important initial step to helping asylum seekers meet their one-year filing deadline and moving them along the path to getting employment authorization, this long-term investment in legal services to support immigrants along the continuing process of obtaining asylum is absolutely critical. Last year, in response to the large numbers of newly arrived immigrants, community-based organizations, and legal services, including NILAG, came together to develop innovative programming to maximize the limited services and personnel, and to provide community-oriented, high-quality legal assistance. And one of the programs that was developed during this process was the Pro Se Plus Project, the PSPP, which was established through private investment and now receives support from the city and state. The PSPP, we are a collective of organizations, including NILAG, African Communities Together, Central American Legal Assistance, Catholic Migration Services, MASA on local and Venezuelan immigrants aid. We aim to empower migrants with the knowledge and tools to advocate for themselves. We would really just urge the sustained, long-term funding that includes full representation and full support for pro se applicants, that is more than, and more lasting than, applications alone. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to just acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Sanchez.
We're on. Okay. Thank you. Good morning, Councilmembers. My name is Laura Adams, and I'm the Legal Services and Capacity Building Coordinator at Immigrant Arc or IARC. Our mission is to increase justice and legal counsel for immigrant New Yorkers by mobilizing New York's legal service providers and addressing the systemic barriers to justice. We do have providers here today that'll discuss in more detail their various programs, so I am going to limit my testimony just to things that have not engaged providers directly. While the influx of migrants seeking refuge in New York City continues to be a challenge of capacity, legal service providers across the five boroughs have worked to rise due to the challenge, making a Herculean effort to come together and provide rapid response services. While they're doing everything they can to serve their roughly 113,000 migrants arriving in the city over the past year, they have faced significant challenges coordinating with the city, particularly the mayor's office. There's been little effort from the city to sit down with stakeholders, legal service providers, and the community-based organizations, who are the frontline responders to this crisis, to collaborate on rapid response efforts and ensure coordinated and strategic response. There hasn't been transparency regarding the curation of the Office of the Asylum Seeker Operations, and providers have not been included in conversations on how to best respond to the needs of various communities despite their areas of expertise. It is also our observation that Black immigrant communities, particularly those from African countries, have particularly suffered from lack of access to culturally competent services. We're seeing many temporary Rapid Clinics from both the city and legal service providers across the city, like the city-founded NYC Asylum Application Help Center. Like many of these clinics, the asylum center has been an immediate resource to provide necessary assistance to migrants navigating the initial immigration process. These clinics do meet an important need, but they have excluded the participation or input of longtime legal services and community-based organizations, furthering a divide between the mayor's office and the nonprofit sector, and failing to address the long-term needs of those that they serve. First and foremost, the efforts run by the Office of the Asylum Seeker Operations do not coordinate long-term representation for migrants, which can be a huge issue since the majority of asylum applications need follow-up. I think you'll be done very quickly. It's our recommendation that we need greater transparency from city agencies, a strategic coordination from the city and the state government with legal service providers and community-based organizations, and funding for long-term immigration and legal services, which includes the passage of the Access to Representation Act at the state level. I'm proud to say that we also worked, Immigrant Arc, in partnership with the city, state, and federal government to do the work permit clinic that Masha so greatly shouted out that completed 1,700 applications in just 10 days, and that's just a great demonstration as what can happen if we can actually coordinate together. Thank you.
Thank you. So, building off of your statement, could you all describe what the collaboration has looked like with your organizations, Moya and OASO?
I'll leave that to service providers. Go ahead to start.
We had an initial meeting with OASO last week, but that was the first that we have had.
The first?
Yes.
And was that just with the organization or a table of providers?
It was with a table of providers from PSPP, as well as LSSNY and CUNY. My understanding is that they would like to have more information-sharing meetings going forward, but other than that, we have not collaborated with them.
And based off of this meeting, another meeting hasn't been scheduled or something more regularly?
We do have, we, there's a desire to have more regular meetings, again, for information sharing, but we were not involved in the planning or the design of the issuance of services.
Understood.
I have not had any interaction directly. I would have to check with others at the agency to see if they've been reached out to.
And then, irrespective of sitting together, has anyone from Moya or OASO just sent out information to providers?
I can say that Moya has convened meetings between the asylum providers, of which PSPP is a member of. And so those meetings have been happening fairly regularly for us to exchange information between providers, but not with OASO specifically.
Yes, exactly.
So is it correct to say... So is it correct to say that providers are figuring out initiatives on your own and trying to support the influx of asylum seekers with the various applications? And then the city has its own lane of initiatives or programming created to support asylum seekers? These are happening in separate paths?
Yes, and we would say that we would welcome more collaboration between our, our network of providers and community-based organizations with the city to provide these services.
Yeah, I mean, just to reiterate, the, the effort is not small to coordinate what has been happening.
Totally.
So, but I do think we would, again, welcome much more coordination across legal services, social services, what's happening with health, what's happening with community engagements. There's grassroots efforts happening that we should all be a little bit more on the same page, and we would want that to be happening in concert.
And then, are you all aware of the various structure of the legal services that OASO is providing? Do you refer out to clients to them?
It seems like they have been working with the shelters primarily as their main source, so I don't think it's well-coordinated at this point.
Okay.
I will say that Moya has made efforts to outreach to providers to say, this is how you can refer people to the center. But my understanding is that now they've moved to TPS, and so we are handling the asylum applications on our own.
Got it. And then we had also learned that they're not focusing specifically on asylum seekers who are not in shelters. Would you say that you all are also covering the ground of people who are not in shelters?
We serve people who are in shelter and not in shelter, correct?
Same, we serve both. But I think that those types of nuances need to be expressed much more coherently so that people understand exactly what the process is and that people, you know, there's also an understanding, I think, implicit in that decision, that people who are not in shelter are fine and can navigate everything on their own, when that is not necessarily the case. They could definitely be doubled up, tripled up, cowed surfing, they could be in any number of precarious situations themselves. I understand that focus is on folks in shelter so that they could conceivably get out of shelter, but you know, everyone, everyone is our, is our priority, frankly.
And then, based on this moment and your years in the legal services world, are there models of collaboration between city and providers that you've heard about or learned about during this time that New York City should replicate?
I think what we, what we would say is that there, there's no kind of one-size-fits-all answer here, and that funding a number of different collaborations, different service methods, including full representation, is really what will be crucial to meeting the need.
I think there's certainly a concern that without that kind of long-term planning and long-term wraparound services, that all of the great work that is happening on rapid response is, is going to be undone as migrants start hitting the legal justice system and falling through the cracks in the process, especially those who are pro se.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much for your testimony. We'll next hear from Pooja Asnani, Susanna Saul, Kelly Rector, and Rosie Wong. And please go ahead whenever you're ready.
Good morning, Chair Hanif, and members of the Committee on Immigration. My name is Pooja Asnani and I'm the Director of the Immigration Intervention Project at Sanctuary for Families, New York City's largest provider of wraparound services for survivors of domestic violence, human trafficking, sexual assault, and related forms of gender-based violence. We are so grateful for the opportunity to testify today on this critical subject, as our city urgently seeks to address the enormous numbers of asylum seekers who have arrived in recent months. Sanctuary's Immigration Intervention Project provides legal representation and advice to 2,000 migrants annually, last year including over 270 abuse survivors assisted with gender-based asylum claims. Few service providers have the legal expertise, experience in trauma-informed interviewing, and linguistic and cultural competence to effectively assist these survivors with gender-based asylum applications. For those fleeing gender-based, gender violence, the availability of high-quality legal assistance can literally be a matter of life and death. We know from our partners and from conversations with officials in the city's asylum application help centers that there are hundreds of migrants arriving who may be eligible for gender-based asylum. These migrants have arrived from countries around the world, uprooted from their homes due to domestic violence and rape, as well as failure of law enforcement to protect vulnerable people, especially women and children, from violence. Their journeys to safety usually involve arduous, life-threatening tracks, often with minor children, and may have experienced sexual violence en route. Even after arriving in New York, they remain extremely vulnerable to abuse, trafficking, and sexual exploitation. With the influx of tens of thousands of migrants in New York City, and thanks to private and state funding, Sanctuary for Families has expanded our legal staff significantly to address this immense need. Numerous law firms have already signed with us to work on these cases. I want to, I know that I'm out of time, but I just want to emphasize that despite our ongoing partnerships with law firms and our innovative programming to expand access to gender-based asylum seekers, the work is not done simply with the filing of the asylum application. There are many crucial components to presenting a successful asylum claim, including detailed affidavits, country condition reports, and considerable legal briefing. And there are capacity limits in our ability to provide full legal representation to the many hundreds and thousands who will need it. Just in the past six months, we have received over 600 referrals from community partners and city agencies. Among these, we are taking the most urgent and challenging cases. We do our best to provide high-quality legal services and, wherever capacity permits, access to Sanctuary's range of holistic other services, including trauma counseling for adults and children, case management, career training, and other economic mobility services. We encourage the city, the council, to expand city funding for these much-needed services and for longer-term funding to support legal representation. We applaud the efforts of the Immigration Committee to ensure that New York or, New York's new arrivals get the help they need to gain asylum legal status. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you, Chairperson Hanif and committee members. My name is Rosie Wang. I'm a program manager at the Vera Institute of Justice. I'm testifying today about the need to provide strong and stable legal services to support immigrants, both longtime residents and newly arriving people seeking asylum. As my written testimony will detail, we need a combination of investments in both long-term, sustainable solutions and programs that meet urgent needs. At Vera, one of our core priorities is to advance universal representation, so that no immigrant is forced to face deportation without legal counsel. We value fairness and dignity and also recognize the many ways that immigrants strengthen and enrich New York and the nation as a whole. Yet, there are longstanding gaps in our legal services infrastructure. As of August, over 125,000 cases before New York immigration courts were unrepresented, left to navigate a complex system alone. Rather than only seeking stopgap measures, I urge the city to advance long-term solutions to ensure that we are prepared to support immigrants into the future. This includes passing Councilmember Hudson's Resolution 556, which calls upon the state to pass the Access to Representation Act, or the ARA. The ARA would create a right to counsel in immigration courts in New York, and as the ARA also calls for, we must invest in recruitment, training, and retention to staff up legal teams to meet this need. This growth must proceed at a sensible pace and in alignment with the recommendations of providers currently doing this work on the ground. While building infrastructure, New York should simultaneously respond to urgent needs for legal help, including assistance with applying for temporary protected status, asylum, and work authorization. These are critical investments in New York's future. More than half of all New York City children have an immigrant parent, nearly half of the workforce is foreign-born, and immigrants own almost half of our small businesses. The city must support the passage of the ARA and long-term solutions like building sustainable legal teams. By doing so, New York can flourish while advancing a vision of justice that centers human dignity of immigrant communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to the Committee on Immigration, Chair Hanif, and the council for the opportunity to address important issues related to legal services for asylum seekers in New York City. My name is Susanna Saul. I'm the Director of the Immigration Practice at Her Justice. Her Justice stands with women living in poverty in New York City by recruiting and mentoring volunteer lawyers to provide free legal help to address individual and systemic legal barriers in the areas of immigration, family, and matrimonial law. We are committed to providing long-term, full representation to those who need it. Our immigration practice has deep expertise providing free legal assistance to undocumented immigrants who have experienced domestic violence, sex trafficking, labor trafficking, and other forms of gender-based violence as they seek to stabilize their immigration status in the United States. Her Justice has a unique pro bono-first model. We know that pro bono legal services are a critical part of the solution to the current immigration legal services shortage. We're uniquely positioned to talk about pro bono services as we have 30 years of experience training and mentoring pro bono attorneys to provide high-quality, free legal services. We know that New York City has an abundance of talented lawyers ready, willing, and able to assist those who cannot afford a lawyer. At Her Justice, we thoroughly screen each client for immigration remedies for which they may be eligible, including asylum. While we do not represent clients in asylum applications, we have strong partnerships with other organizations that do. When screened, we place eligible clients with pro bono attorneys who are equipped by us to provide full representation to them. We invest resources and we create infrastructure to support them, including hiring immigration legal experts as mentors. Chronic under-resourcing of adjudication systems within USCIS, compounded by operational challenges in the pandemic, translates to processing times for adjudication of up to 10 years, and work permit issuances can take up to five years for our clients. Our staff supports clients and their pro bono attorneys during that entire waiting period. The current wave of recent migrants shines a light on the already scarce services. We know that New York City can be a legal ecosystem where all migrants and immigrants can receive the legal relief that they deserve. We would like to thank the City Council for the opportunity to testify on such an important
Good morning. My name is Kaylee Rector and I'm submitting testimony on behalf of the New York Chapter of the American Immigration Lawyers Association, or AILA. AILA is the nation's largest nonpartisan, for-profit, professional organization of immigration lawyers with more than 1,700 members in New York whose practices span the entire scope of immigration law. Today, we aim to shed light on the complexities of asylum law, the expectations placed on asylum applicants, and the need for funding experienced legal advocates in achieving successful outcomes in these cases. Asylum law is intricate and multifaceted, involving a complex set of procedural requirements and a profound understanding of federal immigration policies, statutory frameworks, and legal precedent across multiple levels of our judicial branch. One of the first hurdles faces the one-year filing deadline. To satisfy this deadline, an asylum seeker must submit Form I-589 within one year of arriving in the U.S. Failure to do so effectively forecloses eligibility for asylum with extremely limited exceptions. The 589 is a 12-page document available only in English that not only demands detailed biographical information calling for five years of address employment and an education history, but four pages of questions for, calling for lengthy narrative responses detailing the persecution suffered and feared. These responses, like all other information on Form 589, must be written in English. We commend the Adams Administration for establishing the Asylum Application Help Center, which has already proven to be an invaluable resource for helping asylum seekers meet their one-year deadline. However, the center's scope is limited. First, its services are currently only available to those housed within the city's shelter system. There are limited organizations within the city providing pro se application assistance, and they, like all the legal service organizations, are overwhelmed and overcapacity. Second, pro se application assistance is the first step in a long and complex process. Filing the 589 is like reaching base camp on Mount Everest, a significant barrier overcome, but the most arduous part of the journey yet to come. To actually win asylum, an individual must prevail at a hearing before an immigration judge that is often hours-long, highly contested by an attorney for the Department of Homeland Security, and involves exhausting testimony and cross-examination. This is where the role of an experienced legal advocate becomes indispensable. Attorneys who specialize in asylum cases possess the legal knowledge, skills, and resources necessary to guide asylum seekers through the complex and ever-evolving immigration system. They provide invaluable support by conducting thorough interviews, gathering compelling evidence, preparing strong legal arguments, and helping asylum seekers articulate their experiences effectively. The final evidence package often exceeds 500 pages of detailed written testimony by the applicant, a legal brief with arguments, and citations to relevant case law statutes and regulations, expert testimony, medical evaluations, and corroborating evidence from the applicant's home country, all of which must be accompanied by a certified English translation. The need for representation in asylum seekers is under, asylum cases, excuse me, is underscored by statistics consistently showing higher grant rates for those with legal counsel than those who navigate the process pro se. It's also important to recognize that asylum cases often extend over a long period with multiple hearings and appeals. In conclusion, the New York Chapter of AILA urges the New York City Council Committee on Immigration to recognize the profound importance of funding comprehensive and long-term legal services for asylum seekers in New York City. The establishment of these long-term resources is critical to supporting these asylum seekers throughout the duration of their case. Thank you for your commitment to addressing the pressing needs of asylum seekers in our city, and we look forward to collaborating with you to ensure that they receive the legal representation they deserve.
Thank you. Susanna and Pooja, can you share the unique challenges women and children experience in the application, asylum application process, and what is available specifically for the relief for survivors?
Happy to do so. So, as the Director of the Immigration Project at Sanctuary for Families, we work primarily with women and children who are fleeing gender-based violence. One huge obstacle that we encounter, that we've encountered for, it's not new, but we're seeing it more and more, is the level of trauma that the individuals that we serve have faced, often preventing them from being able to even talk about the abuse that they suffered in their home countries, compounded by oftentimes what is ongoing abuse and exploitation that they experience during their perilous journey to the United States. So ensuring that they have access to counseling, ensuring that they have access to stable housing, ensuring that their children are able to enroll in schools, that they're getting language-appropriate services, all of these are some of the challenges that we encounter in serving women and children who've, who are specifically seeking asylum-based and gender-based violence.
And I would just add to the question about other remedies for women and children who have been subjected to gender-based violence. Our office specializes in U visas and T visas. We're going to see more of that. I think that today's asylum seeker might be next year's U and V, U visa and T visa petitioner, so we need to make sure that those services are also in place. I would echo the challenges that my colleague just referenced. Trauma is, and mental health services are incredibly important. Culturally appropriate services are incredibly important. I would also say that one of the big obstacles in U visas and T visas is also the, the requirement that women and children cooperate with law enforcement, and so our local law enforcement agencies also need to be very sensitive to the trauma that not just women and children seeking gender-based violence, but migrants in general have, have, have encountered, because those law enforcement officials are going to be called upon to provide statements saying that those victims were cooperative with them. And we need to partner with the local law enforcement agencies successfully in order to be able to get those statements of cooperation so that we can put those applications forward to the immigration service and get those individuals on the path to lawful status.
And are you witnessing an uptick in U and T visa petitions?
I think it's too early to, to see right now the uptick in the two, the U and T visa petitions, because in order to file those, you have to first, there has to be the crime that's been identified, that the, the victim has come forward, that you've sought that you've sought law enforcement or cooperated or communicated with them, as Susanna explained. What we are deeply concerned with is the increased risk of exploitation of these women and children in the shelters and outside of the shelters, most of whom do not have access to work authorization. And just anecdotally, we work with a number of other community-based organizations who serve individuals in different shelters. We've been hearing that there is an uptick in solicitation for prostitution and in the potential for trafficking for a lot of these individuals. And we believe that there is an immense need for there to be outreach and services provided to these women and children to ensure that there are protections in place to minimize trafficking and exploitation.
And is Moya or OASO working with you all to really learn about these challenges and also put out information more broadly that allows potential clients to reach out to you all for the services? Could you share how the collaboration is going?
I'm happy to talk about some preliminary efforts that are underway. So Sanctuary for Families reached out specifically to NGBV, the Mayor's Office to End Gender-Based Violence. And we have been in conversations about doing outreach within the shelters. We have a call coming up this week on Thursday with NGBV. I believe that they have communicated also with Moya, although we haven't had a direct communication with Moya on this issue. But we are seeking ways to do outreach and to increase awareness of gender-based violence and trafficking to women and children in these shelters. And that is, and Sanctuary for Families, in collaboration with other nonprofit partners who serve women and children, hopes to conduct outreach and training in these shelters with respect to these issues.
But I will just add, as you've heard today, capacity limitations at our organizations is a huge issue. And so as much outreach as we would love to do, as much education as we would love to do, to be able to absorb the cases and the individuals who will need further follow-up, trauma-informed approaches, our capacity is beyond our limits. So this is why we're coming to you today, to ask for investment, long-term, full representation, mental health services. All of that has to be a part of outreach and education.
And if I may add, so I'm here today in my capacity as a member of AELA, but I'm also a member of the nonprofit legal services community and have been providing direct representation in immigration cases in nonprofits since 2017. To just go off of what my colleagues are talking about and highlighting with the need for trauma-informed legal services, I support that full-heartedly and also want to draw attention to the need for funding to support trauma-informed practices for the people doing these cases. We heard earlier about the amount of exposure that folks who are at the Asylum Application Help Center are getting to extremely, extremely distressing stories day after day. And that takes a toll. There is an incredible, incredible number of people who leave this profession, who burn out. I see that every day in my colleagues. Within this year alone, I have two colleagues who left their current organizations and are considering leaving direct services altogether. So in addition to thinking about the needs to respond to the trauma suffered and experienced by our clients, we also need to be thinking about the people who are delivering those services and thinking about what we can do and what we can fund in our organizations to make that work sustainable and healthy for them.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for lifting that up. You all have been tremendously just undervalued in this moment. And we certainly see your work and value your work and all the expertise that you bring, and not just in this moment, but for many, many years, to allow the city to do what it can do. Are you also providing support to youth, like separate of children with families? But could you talk a little bit more about those who are maybe under 18 or up to age 18? What are some of the challenges you're experiencing with young people who have arrived?
I mean, I think that it's even more difficult for those individuals to access legal services. It's much more difficult for those individuals to reach out for help. They may already be fleeing trafficking, exploitation, a different sort of persecution. They may be wary of adults. And so I think we haven't seen a lot of those individuals. We also don't specialize in outreach to youth populations. But I do think there are additional barriers for those individuals to access services.
I think it's important to highlight also that there are specific immigration remedies that are available just to young people, most notably the Special Immigrant Juvenile Status, which is a specific immigration status accorded to youth who've been abused, neglected, or abandoned by one or both parents. We at Sanctuary for Families, while we specialize in gender-based violence services, we also work with youth who've been abused, neglected, or abandoned in these SIDS cases. And just anecdotally, I will note that the numbers of young people being referred to us by other organizations, which is telling of the organizations that serve youth just unable to meet the need, has increased. And I've actually seen two young people referred to us that aged out within weeks of referring to us. That by the time the referral got to us, they had already turned 21. It's really tragic because for these young people, you know, there's a number of challenges that Susanna highlighted. A lot of them have actually been living separately from their parents for most of their lives and embarked on these journeys to come to the United States to reunite with their parents. And as you might imagine, those reunifications are a lot more complicated psychologically and emotionally for the children and the parent than, you know, one might imagine. And so a lot of these relationships are falling apart upon their arrival in the United States. These young people are winding up in shelters. They might not even be getting access to information about their eligibility for immigration services. And I think that is where we have seen young people be referred to us really right before they turn 21. And what might have been a legal process that would have changed their lives, that would have put them on a path to getting a green card, has been lost because of failure to screen and identify these young people as eligible. And also, I mean, even beyond screening and identifying them, we are all, all of our organizations are at capacity to actually take on these cases for representation. And so I think, you know, we've emphasized and we've heard a lot from the city and from the Mayor's Office about these wonderful efforts to get 589s filed. That is just a very small part of what needs to be the solution. Because at the end of the day, these migrants are going to have their asylum applications filed. And then what? And then you've got hundreds of hours of preparation to help them to get asylum. And if organizations like ours are not adequately funded to provide full legal representation, many of these people may be order-deported, may lose their asylum case simply because they did not have access to representation. So I think that viewing the whole of all of the service providers that collectively provide legal representation is important and ensuring that, you know, as a community, we're supported.
Absolutely. Thank you all so much.
If I can also just add a statistic, a recommendation from the American Bar Association, just to shine a little light on what we mean when we say that we're at capacity. So the ABA's Commission on Domestic Violence and Sexual Violence recommends that staff attorneys working on DVSA cases have no more than 15 to 20 cases on their docket. I have never in my career worked at an organization where that's realistic, so I understand that even that is going to be kind of a bucket list item. But I would say on average, you know, we're looking at like minimum like 50, 60 cases on the average staff attorney's docket. And the bulk of those involve at some point some kind of violence, whether it's the crux of the legal relief that the client is seeking or not. It often comes out in the course of the representation and may be relevant in other ways. So there's still that exposure to it. So just thinking about that number and the number of people who need our services, like we just simply need more funding to have more people, more staff, to do these cases.
And if I might just be able to sort of connect what my colleagues have shared back to Vera's advocacy to pass the Access to Representation Act. This bill is designed to address many of these needs in the sustainable, long-term way that many have described as what is called for, you know, both in this moment and in the future. To have that long-term infrastructure in place, to have legal teams sustainably staffed up to be able to meet fluctuating needs of a changing immigration landscape and changing migration patterns. The bill provides for an advisory committee made up of providers so that it can be implemented sustainably over a six-year period in a way that's in line with the needs of, you know, the people getting services and the people delivering services. And it provides for training, you know, caseload recommendations from the Advisory Council, and adequate compensation for attorney recruitment and retention, support staff, and social workers. And all of these elements need to come together to not only provide wraparound services to people who very much need full legal representation for all of the reasons discussed about how difficult these applications for relief can be, but also to prevent attorney burnout and turnover, which is, you know, a major source of the gap that the state and the city is facing in its legal services infrastructure. And part of the reason we've been caught off guard and unprepared, as we could be, to serve and support our new neighbors. So guaranteed access to counsel on a statewide level would also sort of do away with this yearly uncertainty of, will these contracts get renewed? Will funding be adequate next year to meet the needs that we see? So this would be the responsive, long-term solution that we really want to highlight and would, you know, love the City Council's support on calling for the state to pass. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. We're about to hear from our final in-person panel. If you do not hear your name called, please, and you wish to testify, please visit the Sergeant-at-Arms desk in the back of the room and fill out a witness slip so that I may have your name to call on. And with that, we will hear from Bastian Hartig, Christopher Leon Johnson, and Raoul Rivera. And after that, we'll turn to Zoom panelists. You may begin whenever you're ready.
Hey, I'm sorry about that, guys. I was at the campaign, got downstairs. So I'll say this right now, I gotta go back downstairs. Thank you for chairing this, Chair Hanif. Thank you for chairing this. So I want to say this right now about the migrant crisis. The issue is, like I said before in the last hearing, Chair Ayu Chahana, is that you guys need to start, like I said, keep on investigating these firms that's getting our money. That's what we've got to start doing more. Best you were Arrow Security and DotGo and Metrite. You have to investigate these firms because if you don't investigate these firms, they go keep on doing what they're doing and taking our money. So you've got to start investigating these firms more often, especially with the abuses of the guards. Because that's a bit concerning with me is with the guards, how they're abusing not only members of the public, the shelter, people that live in the shelter, we like to call them guests, and members of the press, even members of the New York Press and Talk Association. So we have to really start investigating that a little more often. And I'm going to say this right now is that we've got to stop putting this money into the nonprofits because all I'm seeing right now with these nonprofits like the NYIC and Locamena and the Work of Justice Project and Vision Freedom Fund and all these nonprofits that so-called mostly advocated for the migrants, especially Make the Road New York, is all this stuff is nothing but electioneering. And we need to stop this. We need to stop putting money into these nonprofits because all we're seeing is electioneering with our tax dollars. They're not even doing anything real effective with the money that they're getting from our tax dollars for contracts and discretionary funding. So, and I would say this right now, and certain of these members in the City Council have to really start addressing this because it's just being, it's getting out of hand. Millions, billions of dollars get spent every month on this crisis, and nothing's really getting accomplished. So that's all I've got to say, and thank you. Thank you so much. Amigo.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Raoul Rivera. I'm a TLC driver, TLC driver advocate. I'm also a native New Yorker, lifelong New Yorker, 53 years old. It seems like everybody here was defending the migrants, the illegals. But I'm not here to attack them, but we are here to defend our New Yorkers. I'm a native New Yorker myself. I'm fighting for my rights. There's so many things happening in this city, and we are being forgotten about. People are forgetting about the New Yorker. We have people saying, "Come, don't come." They're gaslighting. The council is gaslighting. We have the governor saying that the border is now too open. They want limits on the border. This was reported by the New York Post. That's like saying you're a little bit pregnant. It doesn't make sense. We say, "Close the border." If you close the border, it's going to solve a lot of the problems. We challenge you. Can you say that, councilmember? Can you say, "Close the border"? Can you do that? You see? We said the same to Councilmember Brewer. She can't say, "Close the border." You guys are looking for solutions, but that's the solution. Close the border. Legal migration. No discrimination. Protect the New Yorker. I said this before. I'm just repeating myself. What's wrong with closing the border? Do you have a problem with that? You have an issue with Adams going down to Latin America to speak to the migrants. You worry about how much he spent, how much money we're spending of the taxpayer money here in the city, putting them up in hotels. I've spoken to these migrants. I speak Spanish. Many of them are very nasty. And I try to tell them, "You gotta come here and respect this city and this country." I don't care if you come from Pakistan or Boston. You gotta respect the New Yorker. And that's not happening. This council doesn't protect the New Yorker. You're more interested in illegal aliens that are coming in here, who need to be vetted correctly. I think you guys forgot about 9/11.
Your time is up.
You forgot about 9/11. I saw 9/11 with my own eyes. You should remember that.
Thank you.
You should remember that.
Your time is up.
Close the border.
Your time is up.
Close the border.
I will not be using my time to spew hate and to advocate to close the borders. And like you, I am a native New Yorker. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Hanif. We have now heard from everyone who has signed up to testify in person. If we inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify in person, please visit the sergeant's table and complete a witness slip now. We will now hear from panelists on Zoom. We will begin with the panel comprised of Sharon Kaufman, Teri Lawson, Mark Valenotti, and Rex Chen. For virtual panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant-at-arms will set the timer and give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. And we'll now hear from Sharon Kaufman.
Starting time.
My name is Sharon Kaufman, and I am the Deputy Attorney in Charge of the Immigration Law Unit at the Legal Aid Society. We thank Committee Chair Hanif and all members for holding this hearing. No one is served well if asylum seekers in New York City do not achieve stability and self-sufficiency. This means thinking creatively and smartly about ways to help these newest New Yorkers obtain temporary work permits, but also longer-term immigration status. From September 25th to October 6th, the city, state, and federal governments partnered together with immigration advocates and community groups for a two-week expedited work permit clinic for those in New York City shelters. 1,728 work permit applications were filed, primarily 1,728 work permit applications were filed primarily for those granted humanitarian parole. USCIS provided initial processing of these applications and promised to provide approved work permit cards in hand within weeks. Legal Aid is proud to have provided training and support to this unique work permit effort. We urge city, state, and federal governments to adopt this expedited processing model for Venezuelan temporary protected status, which was extended and re-designated this past month. USCIS is notoriously slow to process work permits for those with pending TPS applications, and there is currently class action litigation regarding this. We must all work together to avoid having Venezuelan TPS applicants in New York City shelters fall into the same situation. Legal Aid also encourages the city to not solely invest in light-touch, high-volume immigration legal services. Responsibly providing immigration legal services means having immigration legal providers in control of creating and implementing legal services. The city should provide dedicated funding help, existing providers build up their own pro bono supervision and community outreach. This is the smartest way to encourage more immigration legal representation for asylum, TPS, and any other legal options available to recent arrivals. Legal Aid is committed to fighting to advance immigrants' rights and welcomes any opportunity to contribute constructively here. We thank the committee for its dedication to these issues.
Thank you very much for your testimony. We'll next hear from Teri Lawson, followed by Mark Valenotti, followed by Rex Chen.
Starting time.
Good afternoon. Thank you to Chair Haneef, the Committee on Immigration and Legislative Director Andrea Vasquez, and Deputy Director for Governmental Affairs Rachel Cordero for their comprehensive and engaging briefing paper published this morning. We appreciate your repeated and steadfast commitment to raising awareness for the need for high-quality, free legal services for immigrant New Yorkers. My name is Teri Lawson, and along with my co-founder and co-executive director, yesterday we launched Co-Counsel NYC, a new nonprofit legal services organization that seeks to transform our collective capacity to navigate complex legal systems and support safe, thriving, and engaged immigrant communities. Co-Counsel will partner with community members, community-based organizations, law firms, and companies to respond to the emerging and complex legal needs of immigrant communities. Having listened to our partners in the private and nonprofit sectors and drawing on our many years of expertise, our trauma-informed model provides co-counseling, supervision, mentoring, clinic facilitation, and training on immigration and family law matters. We imagine an innovative approach, joining forces with our partners at the law firms and businesses and community-based organizations to expand access to high-quality legal services, including both pro se and full representation, and increasing training opportunities to assist individuals seeking asylum, TPS, work authorization, U-visas, special immigrant juvenile status, and many more forms of immigration relief. We have heard from many advocates in the private and nonprofit sectors who wish to take on this work but have reasonable anxiety about doing so. Co-Counsel plans to provide substantive training, supervision, and co-counseling required to reduce and manage risk for everyone. We believe that access to high-quality legal representation for immigrant New Yorkers must be expanded, and that immigrant New Yorkers are fierce advocates through the US immigration system when equipped with the right tools and support. We believe there must be direct investment in the know-how and power of immigrant communities, community-based partners, and legal services providers who are experts in the field.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
This investment must extend beyond initial asylum, TPS, and EAD applications filed, and we echo the call for long-term investment in community legal services by the city council and this administration. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We'll next hear from Mark Valenotti, followed by Rex Chen, and then the start of a second Zoom panel, which will begin with David Miranda. But Mark Valenotti, you may begin.
Starting time.
Thank you very much to the committee for this opportunity. My name is Mark Valenotti, and I'm the Managing Immigration and Family Attorney at NIMIC. I want to echo many of my colleagues' sentiment that without stable infrastructure of long-term funding for legal services, we will not be able to provide for new arrivals to our city and will not be able to maintain current services for community members who may have been here for longer. NIMIC is unable to provide direct representation to asylum, which we do find to be, as many of our colleagues would agree, the most effective means of getting applications approved, although we do recognize the necessity of pro se services and the application health centers. We're NIMIC to divert some of its limited resources to asylum. We can no longer assist our communities in matters ranging from U-Visa and VAU cases for domestic violence survivors, TPS DACA renewals, and naturalization for residents who dream of citizenship. As we've raised before, funders have signaled drastic cuts to existing spending at a time when it needs to be increased. Moya announced extensions of Action NYC reduction from three years to one, and we are anxious about the future of Action NYC and about keeping existing services. We would be very happy to expand our services. We want to emphasize to help new migrants, but it's simply not possible without increased stable funding. I would like to share an example of services that are facing termination without extended and stable funding from the city and other providers. Teresa is a 40-year-old LGBT woman who came from the Dominican Republic in 2007 to escape discrimination. She settled in New York, worked, but unfortunately suffered a brutal attack at the hands of her girlfriend's ex in around 2012. Fortunately, she was able to find help at a nonprofit agency obtaining a U-Visa for victims of serious crimes who cooperate with law enforcement. U-Visa recipients have four years before they must file for permanent residency.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Tragically, in 2016, Teresa was again attacked and stabbed and was unable to file on time for her resident status. She came to NIMIC having lost her status, her employment authorization, and under threat of deportation. NIMIC staff filed her application for an untimely extension, which required years of work, advocacy with the NYPD, briefs, responses to USCIS. And this past month in September, Teresa's status was finally restored, and we will be helping her complete her journey to permanent resident status.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Without increased and stable funding, stories like Teresa's will no longer be possible. And we thank you for your time, committee, and we look forward to increased cooperation for our legal services. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We'll next hear from Rex Chen. Following Rex Chen, we'll hear from a panel comprised of David Miranda, Gina Starfield, Hannah Weickbruck, Razia Hamid, and Sierra Craft. But Rex Chen, you are up.
Starting time.
My name is Rex Chen, pronouns he/him. I'm the Immigration Director at Legal Services NYC. We give free immigration legal services to thousands in New York City every year. As many have said, full immigration court representation is very important for asylum seekers to win their cases. They need help gathering evidence and explaining how they do meet all the legal requirements for asylum. Having a case that deserves to win asylum is not always good enough. Many need legal help to win the protection that they deserve. Social workers are also very important. You know, many asylum seekers are traumatized and make inconsistent statements about what they've experienced because their trauma severely affects their memory. Social workers play a critical role to help traumatized asylum seekers tell their story. Social workers are important as part of providing full legal representation, not just to help them access social services and not just to help fight burnout among advocates. A third point is that analyzing changes in immigration law and policies is very important. At Legal Services NYC, we produce an advisory, and we held a national webinar to share tips with advocates for how to defend immigrants under a 2022 system that the government came up with that's called the Asylum Processing Rule. It basically rushes certain asylum seekers through the process. And now the government is saying that they're going to continue adding people to the asylum processing rule process by focusing on families. So this is especially gonna affect women and children who are recent asylum seekers. As far as the city's efforts, we at LS NYC have found it difficult to learn some of the details of what their services, how to access them. For example, which people can access their services, what they're working on, and who's allowed to walk in without an appointment. We're glad that you asked them that question because it's very helpful for us to gather that information. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your testimony. We will next hear from David Miranda, followed by Gina Starfield, followed by Hannah Weickbruck.
Starting time.
Hi, my name is David Miranda, and I'm the Senior Staff Attorney at Covenant House New York. I would like to thank the New York City Council Committee on Immigration and especially Chair Haneef for the opportunity to testify today on such an important issue. At Covenant House, we serve young people aged 16 to 24 who are experiencing homelessness. For more information on Covenant House, please refer to our written testimony. In the past year, in our Legal Services Department, I'm the only attorney actually on staff at Covenant House. I've met with roughly 180 immigrant youth, providing direct legal services to 90 of them by either assisting with the asylum and work authorization process, doing intakes and screenings, and also change of venue assistance, as some of them have court dates all over the country. I think the issue for us at Covenant House is that there are no legal service providers that are available to take our young people. So unless I take the cases in partnership with some of our partners, such as the DOR, the City Bar Justice Center, and Catholic Charities, there are no other attorneys in the city that are going to be able to do so. And a lot of the issues that we're dealing with are especially time-sensitive. For example, as you know, the asylum application has to be filed within a year, and many of our youth do actually qualify for special immigrant juvenile status. That is a lengthy process, since it takes having to go to family court, as well as then filing the necessary immigration applications. And many of our young people, because we serve youth from the age of 16 to 21, many of the young people that we see are on the verge of turning 21. So that is one of the issues that we're seeing. There is an issue with youth accessing the Asylum Navigation Center. It's unclear whether the asylum navigation-
Thank you for your testimony. Your time has expired.
Just one second. So the referral has to be made directly from the shelter, but my understanding at this point is that the referral has to be done from the DHS shelter, a DSS shelter, and not, I'm not sure that they're taking cases from the DYCD shelter. So I have, our youth have so far been unable to access the Asylum Navigation Center. So there is definitely a need for more legal services. We're doing the best that we can, and I do appreciate the council for letting me testify today. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your testimony. We'll next hear from Gina Starfield, followed by Hannah Weickbruck, followed by Razia Hamid.
Starting time.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Gina Starfield. I will be speaking for my colleagues Razia Hamid and Hannah Weickbruck on behalf of the DOR's Legal Services Center. The DOR is a comprehensive youth development organization that has been supporting young New Yorkers since 1972. Our Legal Services Center specializes in serving young people, including many clients who are unhoused, undocumented, or LGBTQIA+. In the fiscal year 2023, we handled 3,282 immigration matters for young people and specifically represented 170 young people in asylum applications. As our written testimony will detail, no-cost immigration legal service providers in New York City are struggling to respond to the high number of recent arrivals, including many children and young immigrants who are seeking legal services. Almost every day, staff members on our legal services team have to turn away young immigrants seeking legal support and representation. All children and young people who may qualify for asylum should receive legal services as soon as possible due to the one-year post-arrival deadline to apply for asylum and because many of them are in removal proceedings before immigration courts. It is particularly difficult for children and young people to develop and present their own asylum claims without counsel. The process for seeking asylum is highly complex and opaque. Unsurprisingly, asylum seekers who are represented by an attorney are significantly more likely to win asylum or other forms of relief from deportation. Attorneys can mean the difference between relief and deportation, safety and danger for many young people. Many of the immigrant youth we serve are people with complex trauma. We ask New York City to support funding for mental health providers to expand access to mental health services for asylum seekers. The DOR's comprehensive and holistic programming pairs legal clients with social workers throughout their legal case, and we have seen the positive impact of giving youth access to social workers and mental health services throughout the asylum process. The current state of immigration processing means incredibly long wait times at all stages of the asylum process. We often see wait times extend for up to five years for an asylum interview-
Thank you for your testimony. Your time has expired.
We urge New York City to support legal service providers in full representation, to increase language access as well for asylum seekers, especially for Indigenous language speakers, and to rescind its 60-day shelter rule and ensure shelter for all youth and families with children.
Thank you for your testimony. We'll next hear from Hannah Weickbruck, followed by Razia Hamid, followed by Sierra Craft.
Starting time.
Razia and I both cede our time to Gina, as she speaks on behalf of the DOR.
Thank you very much. We'll next hear in that case from Sierra Craft.
Hi, good afternoon, esteemed members of the Immigration Committee. I appreciate the opportunity to address you today. I am Sierra Craft, the Executive Director at ICARE. ICARE is a nonprofit coalition of legal service providers dedicated to providing vital and free representation to immigrant children facing deportation in New York City. Our ultimate mission is to ensure universal access to counsel for these children. Since 2014, we have supported over 11,000 young immigrant New Yorkers. As you've heard today, access to an immigration attorney can be a matter of life or death for immigrant children. The children we represent have fled extreme violence and trauma in their home countries, embarking on a perilous journey in search of safety, protection, and opportunities. And without our representation, most of these children would be forced to represent themselves against a trained government lawyer. And studies show that only have a 15% chance of winning their case while unrepresented. And meanwhile, when they're represented, they have nearly over a 90% success rate of winning their case. And so the loss of attorneys can result in the swift deportation back to home countries where their lives are at danger. Today, we urge city council to make the long-term investment in full representation for unaccompanied children and wraparound supports. In addition to the light-touch services we've heard about today, this investment would look like multi-year funding and to support and pass bills like the Access to Representation Act to ensure that every immigrant in need of legal representation is connected and supported and guided on their journey. New York City continues to rank fourth in the highest number of unaccompanied arrivals and released to sponsors, so we see over 8,400 unaccompanied children arrive to New York every single year. So again, I just want to reiterate our call to city council to prioritize and increase funding for these vulnerable communities, especially the many unaccompanied minors in New York City who rely on these critical legal services and immigration support that-
Your time has expired. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. We'll now hear from our next Zoom panel. We'll hear from Ernie Colette, followed by Hannah Tager, followed by Leslie Allen. Ernie Colette, you're next up.
Good afternoon, and thank you very much to the committee for allowing me to testify. My name is Ernie Colette. I'm the Supervising Attorney with the Immigration Law Project at Mobilization for Justice. Despite the number of legal services providers and legal collaborations in New York City, including the great work by the Asylum Application Health Center, the number of asylum seekers seeking representation overwhelms the current structure of those seeking relief. Asylum seekers face adjudication backlogs, long wait times for employment authorization, and struggle to remain in shelters or find affordable housing. This is an unprecedented number of individuals seeking a safe, reliable place to live while trying to navigate a complex immigration system pro se. And removing individuals from shelters as quickly as possible exacerbates a crisis that often forces clients to decide between focusing their attention on either seeking housing or on seeking legal services, which again is intensified without immediate access to employment authorization. Many of our prospective asylum clients who have faced persecution, result in trauma, are attempting not only to seek representation, but also continue to navigate access to housing, education, medical care, both physical and mental health, technology and food, with language barriers that only make this process more difficult. This is not even considered the other humanitarian and family-based needs of our current clients, which also require time and investment to ensure proper representation. Some solutions may include increasing and creating more grant opportunities that focus directly on access to representation, providing new and increasing funding, as mentioned today by the city council, for specific applications for relief such as work authorization, increasing access to technology and safe locations, and access to mental health counseling, a right to representation to all immigrants seeking representation, especially to unaccompanied minors, and calling on the federal government to expand online filings to applications with fee waivers and expedite work authorization for certain humanitarian forms of relief, specifically asylum, TPS, and SIG. Any future pathways should be accompanied by direct support by the city council to increase funds and create programs that will allow for more representation, as the demand for these services will only grow. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your testimony. We'll next hear from Hannah Tager, followed by Leslie Allen.
Starting time.
Hi there, and thank you to Chair Haneef and the esteemed members of the Committee on Immigration for the opportunity to submit testimony. My name's Hannah Tager, and I'm a policy- My name's Hannah Tager, and I'm a Policy Manager at WIN. We're the city's largest provider of shelter and supportive housing to families with children. We house over 6,500 people, and roughly a third of our clients are immigrants. We also shelter about 270 families who are recently arrived migrants. We work day in and day out to close opportunity gaps for these families. And while we're facing significant budget cuts and without reimbursement when as provided food and clothing, orientation, childcare and recreation programming, and referrals to physical and mental health care. We've spent millions of unparticipated dollars, and without legal intervention, most of these families will be reliant long-term on shelter providers like WIN and the city for high-cost emergency shelter and resources. We have seen undocumented families stay upwards of eight years in shelter and families being raised entirely in homelessness because without a social security number and asylum application, they remain ineligible for housing vouchers like CITYFAPs. So in response to that, we launched our own legal empowerment clinic, the LEED clinic, so that families can apply for asylum within their one-year deadline. It's a unique collaboration between the nonprofit legal provider NILAG and the immigration law firm Fragaman. It's been a huge success so far, and we've helped over 70 families with their asylum claims. And we're excited to see this model being replicated elsewhere. However, there's still work to be done. The reality is, is that there will be thousands of migrant families who miss their asylum application deadline and have to live undocumented in the city, essentially relegated to second-class status. So in response to that reality, we are proposing the following policy recommendations. First, we need the City Council to pressure the administration to please enact the CITYFAPs expansion and bill package, right? That will decrease the-
Your time has expired. Thank you so much.
-mild eligible households into permanent housing. Additional recommendations are in my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. We'll next hear from Leslie Allen. After Leslie Allen, we'll hear from our final Zoom panel, which will be composed of Nualla O'Doherty Norango, followed by Antonia House, followed by Jim Burke. But next up is Leslie Allen.
Starting time.
Good afternoon. My name is Leslie Allen, and I'm the Deputy Director of Legal Services at the New York City Anti-Violence Project. I use she/her pronouns, and I appreciate the opportunity to share my perspective and experiences with the barriers to service immigrant clients within AVP. Our immigrant survivors are trying to move towards safety and stability after fleeing violence and persecution. We serve LGBTQ and HIV-affected survivors in a wide variety of legal services, including immigration, but certainly not exclusive to immigration. We are small compared to a lot of the agencies that you have heard from today, with only 120 immigration clients currently active. What we do see is that we have hit a point where we no longer can take on new clients because of lack of funding, because litigating asylum cases, start to finish, is incredibly detailed and requires a tremendous amount of training and expertise and is incredibly paperwork-heavy. We know that we have incredible amounts of unmet need. LGBTQ survivors are referred to AVP through calling our 24/7 hotline, which helps people in all kinds of different states of crises. And what we've seen is that the immigrant demand for services and protection has increased exponentially in recent months and years. As a lawyer and the manager of legal services at the Anti-Violence Project, I regularly witness litigants trying to navigate around systemic barriers faced by LGBTQ that LGBTQ and HIV-affected immigrants are especially having difficulty navigating. What we are specifically worried about at AVP is extreme delays and opaque procedures in navigating the immigrant court system, difficulty in finding pro bono forensic physical and mental health providers necessary to corroborate asylum seekers in telling their story and history of persecution.
Thank you so much. Your time has expired.
Yes. Thank you for this opportunity, and please refer to my written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. We'll next hear from our final Zoom panel. We'll first hear from Nualla O'Doherty Norango, followed by Antonia House, followed by Jim Burke.
Starting time.
Hello, my name is Nualla O'Doherty Norango. I'm an attorney here at the Jackson Heights Immigrant Center in Jackson Heights, Queens. I'm here in a- thousand, hundred family apply for asylum. We are the type of small mutual aid group on the ground, helping the maximum number of people. And we implore the city and the City Council to help us fund these projects. A small group like mine goes through a case of paper a week, and we have no funding to buy the paper. We work on all volunteer staff, and we're working to try to help as many immigrants as possible. But there's really no funding stream for small mutual aid groups like mine to seek support from the city. We are doing this day in and day out. We don't have time to be applying for grants. We really ask or demanding that the city give us some small amounts of funding so we can continue serving as many immigrants as we can. We'd also love some answers about how the shelter changes are going to affect these immigrant families, so we can spread the information. Truthful information is so crucial. So many immigrants are going based on whims and rumors and speculation. So it's important that groups like mine have correct information, especially about things like the changes in Medicaid that have happened and why all the new immigrants are now being denied Medicaid. We'd love to get this information and work closely with the city so we can help as many immigrants as possible. So I'm asking the city to really look at small mutual aid groups that are down in the community, helping the immigrants every day, and provide support for them. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We'll next hear from Antonia House, followed by Jim Burke.
Starting time.
Hi, my name is Antonia House. I work at T Group Justice, and I coordinate SILEC, which is a collaborative of 13 legal service providers and base-building organizations that serve immigrant communities throughout the city. Collectively, we handle thousands of immigration cases every year. I want to echo what others have said, that while pro se assistance is incredibly important, problems lie ahead for the city if it does not increase investment in legal services infrastructure that can address long-term needs of both new and existing immigrant populations here. Preserve deadlines and even work permit applications will postpone, but not prevent the creation of a new generation of undocumented New Yorkers. Others have talked about the limitation of pro se services. I'll just note that most people who are unrepresented in removal proceedings will eventually be ordered removed, but very few will actually be physically deported. They will lose their employment authorization and a clear pathway to lawful status and will remain here facing an incredibly precarious future. On the other hand, people who are granted asylum get access to federal refugee resettlement assistance, which includes rental assistance, public benefits, and supportive services that will help them secure permanent housing. In other words, there is a huge and growing need for full representation that nonprofit legal service providers are best positioned to address for reasons that have been addressed through other testimony and in our written testimony. The last thing I want to mention is that, along with others here, we ask the administration, particularly Moya, to engage and collaborate with all city contracted providers, including Action NYC and IOI providers, as we respond to this moment. We have asked for these joint meetings and have yet to have one. Continued siloed conversations will just lead to duplicative efforts and missed opportunities for fruitful collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We'll next hear from Jim Burke.
Starting time.
Hi, my name is Jim Burke. I'm a co-founder of 34th Avenue Open Streets, where we see lots and lots of migrants in this neighborhood in Jackson Heights. We work closely with these small mutual aid places like Jackson Heights Immigration Society, Community SOC, which is a food bank that distributes clothing and food. And these groups don't have enough money to help folks. They, one of the groups distributes clothing every week and food as often as they can. They actually also open up their community center every Wednesday for the shelter residents to get appropriate clothing, because they often come from climates that don't even support this type of weather we're having now, never mind winter. And these community organizations are on the ground, and all those people I know are panicking now with the limitations on how long they can stay at the shelter and these, how are they going to get their mail? How are they going to get their, this information? The clock is, you know, working against them. These small groups process a lot of these applications. They help them fill them out. They go step by step. They usually have a lawyer on hand to review it at the end. But they need help, and I would really urge you to think of COVID and think about the first responders, where these smaller mutual aid groups. Unfortunately, the larger groups are unwieldy, and by the time they get it together, the time has run out. So again, urging you to look at these small, community-based neighborhood groups in the neighborhoods where we have the most immigrants, like Jackson Heights and Corona Elmhurst, and let them help these migrants get their work visas and get the help that they so desperately need, and figure out how, what's their next step when they're being kicked out of where they're living now in our neighborhood. We have to be ahead of the game, and again, urging you-
Thank you so much. Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We have now heard from everyone who has signed up to testify. If we inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify in person, please visit the sergeant's table and complete a witness slip now. If we inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify virtually, please use the raised hand function in Zoom, and we will call on you in the order of hands raised. Seeing no one else, I would like to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. And with that, I will turn it back over to Chair Hanif to close us out.
Thank you so much, Nicole. Thank you all for joining. As Chair of the Immigration Committee, I remain committed to ensuring all new arrivals to our city are met with compassion and welcomed with dignity. I will use my time to bring attention to what causes mass migration and displacement, climate crises, political tensions, war and economic stressors. We will not use my committee to dissuade anyone from coming to our city. I remain committed to pushing for comprehensive legal services for full representation, as we heard from providers directly, and to working closely with the administration for accessible legal services that reach our new neighbors and reject directives such as the 30-60-day rules that make it further precarious to obtain services. We are appreciative of all the small and large organizations, mutual aid networks, committed to this work. Thank you all for joining. See you at our next hearing.